Let's call the order, the Chickasha City Council meeting. I need a roll call, please.
Boyd?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Hevethwaite?
Here.
Grayson?
Here.
Ashante Alexander?
Here.
Rosalyn?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Mosley?
Here. We'll start off by being led in prayer by Dr. Alexander and pledged by Zach Grayson.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day, another day to serve, another day to remember. We thank you, Lord, for touching the hearts of this council as we remember the sadness of the day of Henry Argo. But, Lord, we ask you and thank you for speaking to hearts to make a difference in the lives of those now gone, but to do what's right. Thank you, Father, for the servants of this city, for this state, and for this nation. Bless us, keep us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge to allegiance is justified in the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any citizen comments. And going on to council communications, I do want to say a couple of things. I wish Jim was here, but he's not. Spencer Isso, I received zero complaints about the appearance of the cemeteries. I really appreciate that, guys. Great job. Zach was talking about some people were complimenting, because even though the weather we had beforehand, for everybody to stay on top of it and make them look good. So I appreciate it. I want everybody to know that it is greatly appreciated by the council. And one thing that Dr. Alexander touched upon was the remembrance of the Henry Argo lynching. I don't know if you people know about that, and I didn't wear of it. But tomorrow is actually the 93rd anniversary, it's a terrible thing, remembrance of it. It's May 31st of 1930 was the lynching of Henry Argo, an African-American man, pretty heinous crying. You know, you can never forget your history, because if you forget your history, you will doom to repeat it in the future. So we've got to remember those and grow from that. There was a resolution that Kelly Boyd had written about a year ago.
And Dr. A. And Dr. A. Thank you.
And the council, we're looking at that, like to have it on our work session.
That will be on our agenda at the Monday night regular meeting on the 5th.
On the 5th? Perfect. All right.
It's on that agenda.
Is that the one that Shay had?
It's been edited by a number of folks, but yes.
Okay. So I may not have the original version then. All right. But that's something we're going to be addressing also. I think it's really important to remember all your history, good and bad, because it's what built us. Moving on, anybody else have a council communication?
Yes, we spoke about it earlier, but I guess a few years back, a civic organization during the holidays would put out American flags down downtown and throughout town, city sidewalks. I guess there was holes bored in the concrete. And I guess those holes are all gone because of new concrete and stuff like that. So if a civic organization wanted to tackle that, would the city be able to facilitate getting the new holes done so they could do that, or what would that look like?
Yeah, we'd have to have a conversation about that. I don't know if there's any structural issue. I know there's still some holes for those flag poles, but I don't... If some that have been covered up, then we could look at revisiting that, certainly.
Okay.
Be glad to work with whoever and direct them probably to our public works folks, but yeah, we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
And also, the request tracker is still the best way to submit any issues?
Sure. Yeah. Any potholes or dangerous things that people observe, request tracker is the preferred way for us to address those.
What's the best way to reengage if they submit something and it's been a couple of months and it hasn't been resolved? They haven't heard anything. Just resubmit a new one, or call, or what?
They're welcome to call my office. That might be the best thing if they've submitted one that hasn't been addressed. Now, it doesn't mean we can always get to them right away. There are sometimes reasons that that takes a while, but...
Okay.
Yeah. Glad to help wherever we can.
Maybe one of those things where it's the top of the pile, then you have 14th of Missouri take place and it gets moved to the bottom.
That's what I tell people, stay on top of my inbox, you know?
This is one of those things where priorities jump in front when it comes to critical mass. But I also want to thank, I got, I know I have two veterans on council. I don't know if I missed anybody. I got Zach and Dr. Alexander, both Army.
Army.
And I appreciate their services for the years that they were in the Army.
Thank you.
I think it's key. So I appreciate the flag thing, too. Anybody else?
I was going to mention the entry, I just noticed the other day coming back from Lawton. I might have missed it, but do we have, I don't know if we have a welcome to Chickasha or anything coming in from the south, you know, like coming from Lawton. There's an exit 80, you know, to get off Chickasha, but it's very, you know, it's not a whole lot of welcoming.
We used to have one, and they removed it for the development on the south end of town.
Big grant slab.
Yeah, big grant slab.
It's somewhere.
It's somewhere.
They climb.
So we have no entry, welcome to Chickasha.
Spencer, you know where it is?
I don't. I still have the two, one on the west side.
Yeah. They had one on the south side, too.
There's not one hanging down now. They built it on where it was two...
It was about where the Lawton exit ramp to go to Lawton, where you get off on, coming back from Oklahoma City. It was right around in there where it used to be, before they did the changes.
Yeah, they took that median out or whatever, narrowed it down, and they took it out. And supposedly it's in storage somewhere. Somewhere.
Maybe Jim Crosby.
Just a thought, just a thought, maybe, you know, we need to cover that base.
Do anything. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to item 3A, proposed fiscal year '23-'24 budget for the city of Chickasha, Chickasha Municipal Authority, Chickasha Municipal Airport Authority, provided by council members, trustees, provide two council members and trustees. And it's still warm.
Hot off the press.
It's hot off the press. You want to talk about this?
Not in great detail.
I was wanting to go page by page.
I will give you just some very, very highlight highlights. The general fund starts on page one and goes through about page 66. Then you've got special funds after that. The Chickasha Municipal Authority budget starts on page 104. And then you've got miscellaneous funds following that. Like I said, I don't plan on going through this in detail tonight. We've gone through it at our budget workshop in terms of requests from the departments. We've presented a balanced budget here. We are seeing some improvement in our sales tax revenues and other revenues. But we also have a lot of unmet needs that we're trying to balance and get things done this next year in the way of capital improvements, some street improvements. We've talked about the need for a water treatment plant and our effort to seek a vote later this summer. And we'll certainly have an opportunity to answer any questions at the public hearing that's scheduled in a couple of weeks.
Would that be on June 20th, or the...?
June 20th, yes, was when we anticipated adopting the budget. We have to post this, allow the public to see it, and comment on it, and we'll...
Is there a way on the, on the budget, like, we have the 26 valves, the, you know, 30-some-odd fire hydrants that need to be replaced, streets and roads. If we have a priority list of what we're looking at, what are we able to afford to make changes within our own budget without the aid of grants and such?
Yeah.
That way we can constantly keep some work going while we try to hit those big projects when we get some assistance from like, you know, Tom Cole's office on drainage.
Yeah. The budget document itself does not provide that level of detail, but we do have that in the budget request from the department. So we can provide that certainly to...
Would Jim be able to provide?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I think that's important for the council to see, and for the citizens to see that, hey, here's where we're trying to go. We'll get to, we have critical mass items that we've got to take care of. And every now and then you have, like I said, a 14th of Missouri that pops up that kind of ruins a lot of things.
Right.
That you have to dump a ton of money into to fix, but it's a, I mean, thoroughfare. And then, you know, just when I run in the mornings, you know, I see, you know, when you're, because I run all over, you see all sorts of things. You try and make nothing remote, and you find problems and such. And there's always something that you always find.
There is always something.
Never-ending.
And this may have been covered in a budget meeting I missed, but this is a balanced budget, but does this account for the staffing that we need or that we currently have, as far as like police, fire?
This anticipates full staffing, for example, in the police department. So it does not anticipate that we would have a full staff on July 1st. We know that's going to take some time, but there's resources programmed for full staffing ultimately.
Okay. Is that headcount or just using, because I know it depends on how we're recruiting, whether first year is going to be a lot less than somebody that's seasoned veteran that may come work for us.
Right. Yeah. I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Well, if you set aside like a million dollars additional payroll, would that be, are you trying to get 15 officers for that million? Or is it just going to be, we'll fill out until that million's gone? We're still short. I mean, we're using the budget, but we're still short on headcount.
Yeah. No, this would anticipate full headcount.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are we using for that number, full headcount? Is it 41?
32, isn't it?
32.
I think it's 32.
30, it's, yeah. 30, 32 is the number I had in my head. It's right around 30.
I've heard both, I've heard both.
I think you're right. I think it's like 32.
I've heard both those numbers. First, I heard 32, and then later on, I heard 41 is what we really need.
No, it's not that high.
No. Is it 36?
36.
We might need 41.
Okay, there we go. Right. Yeah, the 36 would be officers.
Yes, 36 officers. Is that the D E?
Yes, sir.
Later it was 28, under control, and then four in the C I D, which was the investigative.
Okay, all right. 32 plus admin on top of that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Very good.
That's where the 32 number came from. I knew that was in one of them.
And then would that include the, no, is fire freely staffed right now?
Not currently.
How short are we?
Uh, we're one short right now. We're two short in a couple of ways.
Okay.
And this anticipates some additional fire department personnel.
Okay.
Training officer, for example, and three, three additional firefighters.
This includes 45 other personnel.
Okay. Okay.
Fire side, and we'll be banking that through additional angles, resources, changing our fee schedule, and through the open, our staff.
Is a, who's been doing the training now? Is that Jeremiah? Who's that?
Deputy chief is.
A deputy chief, okay.
Keith, could we have sort of a, maybe you could email or we could post it public, like on the front of this budget, so we know where to find sections like you just broke down a few minutes ago?
Yeah, there will be a better table of contents and a budget message with the adopted budget.
Okay.
I'd be happy to just stick your notes on the side.
I'd like be able to go to certain, you know, if you wanna go to special projects or just see what, you know, if you just wanna stay in the staff, whatever, then...
When you break out between City Ave and CMA and CMAA.
Right.
I was looking at the sales tax, it's kinda, it's good. We're estimating fourteen-seven for this year, we're already at thirteen-three, and we still have two more months to collect. So we should, I'm hopefully surpassing that, fourteen-seven.
How much a month do we normally, in the summer months, generate?
It's be close to a million. We should be hitting about a million each month, which would carry us past that.
Past that, yeah.
We took some, like, emergency actions last month for instituting rate changes, if I recall?
That was the towing was the emergency, wasn't it? Vehicle towing, the emergency order.
No, it was a institute.
You're right, you're right, you're right, yeah.
So how far are we into the cycle of actually, cause we made it effective immediate to start with rate changes and such? Was it rate changes or was it water, some kind of increase?
Well, the...
We didn't make a water rate increase.
No. The only time we had a water rate increase is if the sales tax doesn't pass.
Yeah.
Alright.
But we did declare an emergency on something, make it effective immediate.
Several things.
I think we changed the language, didn't we?
Emergency declaration.
It was the language.
Just the language changed.
Yeah, the emergency declaration dealt with the intersection of Fourteenth and Missouri.
Yep.
That we needed to bypass some competitive bidding requirements.
Okay.
In fact, I think we're addressing some of that issue again tonight, but...
It should shorten it about five or six weeks, I think.
Yeah.
Have we received any bids for that?
We have not, and so we're going to rebid that.
Has the engineer made an estimate on it?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I was kinda curious. I was gonna say half a million, so just throwing that out there.
Keith, on the, on the proposed, it looks like our revenues are one point seven million less than our expenditures. Is that, is there a reason for that, or?
We have continued to use prior year fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's...
It's comparable to what it was a year ago.
Okay.
Now, if you're using, like, Brian was talking about that million seven negative.
Where is that?
It's on the first page, at the very bottom right-hand corner. On, does that include the funds coming back in from, cause there's a three percent, two stays in general fund, one goes to the CMA. If the CMA is able to support itself, that it can come back to.
Right.
Does this include the comeback part?
I think it's about a million nine that comes back from, from CMA to the general fund.
Okay, where's this transfer, two point one million right there for the budget for next year? Under the revenue section?
Transfer other funds.
Yeah, transfer other funds, two point one million?
Yes, that includes, I think, the one point nine, and I'm not sure what the addition, Robert, do you know what the additional amount for that transfer from other funds?
Now, if you look at the first page.
Yeah.
There's the summary, you can go to the more detailed page, oh, then we'll break it out, the transfer from the general fund.
Okay, okay.
Transfer from the general fund, between the, between the sales tax, tax improvement fund, the transfer to the CMA, and we can transfer to the C I A also.
Okay.
Now, if you see on the first page, it's just a code, but there's a breakout.
On page four, you see the breakout of the one point nine and a hundred fifty thousand, it looks like, from the police bond fund. That comes up, that brings the two million.
There it is, yep, you're right, I see it. Okay. Then the CMA.
Is there a place, is there a place for projected revenues on this, in the budget here?
It's on the proposed side.
That's projected revenues for the next fiscal year?
Uh-huh, for the far right-hand column.
No, no, please, there's a column for that on the, on the budget presentation.
Right.
Budget worksheet, there it is.
Okay.
And that was the report, I think that was presented at the workshop.
Okay.
The column has projected that for the year.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we guys were looking for. We're looking at, are you, page one hundred, is that what you're looking for? You looking for the CMA?
Yep, I am.
Page one hundred.
Thanks. You knew I was digging for it?
Huh?
You knew I was digging it? Here we go.
Keith, and on another note, since we're going through the budget, we've got a nice little bird's nest up in the eaves of the east side of this building where some of the crown molding on the outside is rotting. And it's gonna need paintwork pretty quick. So, when I was, it's light, I looked up today and saw a little bird looking out chirping.
Looking at you?
Yeah. So, I was like, ah, that's not good.
Which side of the building did you say that's on?
On the east side of this one. There's a nice little hole.
Looking for volunteer, get up on a ladder to...
I got that man.
You do. I got, I got a question, you know, and this kinda goes along with what Kelly was saying. When it has the column twenty, twenty-three and says proposed, that's proposed budget at that point? So I had to compare it to the two, so it still looks like, you know, it looks like a deficit on the proposed budget. The actual figures are much healthier. I guess proposed budget, would they have, I'm trying to figure where we, where we dragging it?
Oh, we came in way under on our expenditures.
Oh.
On the actual for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. Shoot, shows we're...
Well, yeah, you look at the capital, it was only six hundred and fifty-eight thou, six hundred fifty-three thousand. And this next year, we had proposed five point one million. So where's the...
Say that again?
On page one hundred.
Yeah.
You have the actual expenditures, then you have the budgeted expenditures. And the capital
Four million.
Was four point five million dollars less than the budget.
Here, you can use mine.
You want mine, Robert? We'll see how it goes.
Mr. Johnson's page numbers, maybe you can do that.
Yeah, my page numbers.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. It's the first page of the CMA.
Yeah, page, yeah, please.
Almost likes reads backwards there.
It's on the space.
Yeah. It's hard to see, isn't it? Okay, first page of the CMA? Yes, sir. So what's the question? I'm looking at the CMA capital, count thirty. Okay. Says six fifty-three was actual, and the budget was five point one four five. What were we anticipating, do you remember, Robert?
Two million.
From last year? To be such a significant difference?
To have an expenditure.
This is where, I believe there was, if you go to page...
This line here.
If you go to page one hundred and four. Yes, sir. And under the, about halfway down, under capital equipment, there was a line item there for water, wastewater, empty construction. There was budgeted at a million, and, and you can see none of that's been used. And then go down below that, and there was one point five million budgeted for water line replacement and only, replacement, and only three hundred and twenty-nine thousand has been used. So these items were budgeted, but just no expenditures incurred for this year. Okay. So that was roughly three point five, almost four million. And maybe only, and approximately... Same thing with the infrastructure repairs, too. Uh, less than six hundred thousand incurred. Yeah. So it was anticipated, but those, not before.
We took in less than two thousand.
Would there be any...
So do we have carryover in that fund for into the next year?
Well, it washes out and starts over again the next year. I don't know if we, we would have some rollover as fund balance would increase. Cause if you look, our fund balance is three point four million through ten months.
Yeah.
Plus another million on the general fund. So it was about four, which a year ago, that had been a goose egg.
So if you go back to page one hundred.
Uh-huh.
Which is the summary.
Oh, three point six, yeah.
That's three point five million is a use of fund balance, which would be a carryover.
Oh, this negative, this negative two point five?
That reflects expenditures, can access the revenues. So therefore, you're going to be using fund balance. That number will actually shift up here to this line that says...
So it'd be carryover from this year for next year? Yeah, we're dipping into our savings from carryover from this year to next year, correct? That's what you're saying? The two and a half million savings, yeah.
It would be reflected as a use of fund balance.
Yep.
If you go up there to the last line of the revenues.
Yep.
See that, so really that number will move up there, increase your revenue, then it becomes balance.
Okay. So actually it's gonna change a little bit, possibly. It'll change, maybe?
A little bit.
No, on this right here, does it ever show, is there a balance sheet that's ever in the budget?
No, that's just, that's just a financial statement, there's no expenditures.
Okay. I knew it'd just be income statement, I just didn't know if a balance sheet would actually show what were, what was expendable for projects and what wasn't. As in like what's encumbered, what's not encumbered?
Okay.
Do we have anything like that?
The, the, the monthly financial report is distributed in the, in the package, it has a couple, it has a lot of states and conferences.
Okay.
So it mentioned here today, it's...
Okay, alright, I might take a look at that. Alright, thank you. Okay. Thanks, Robert.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Shows we kinda dug ourselves out of a hole. Shows we finally dug ourselves out of a hole.
I'm, I'm pretty pleased with what's happened with last year. And that's, that's a big swing.
It's hard to decide.
Do we currently have or possess the software to show these budgets in different types of charts? To be able to, you know, get right to the point, you know, be able to actually see it more visual? I'm kind of a pie chart kinda guy, so...
Yeah, there will be some of that in the budget message that accompanies the budget, yeah. I don't know that we have a sophisticated software that does that, but much of this will be put into graphic form and pie charts and those kinds of things.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be a yes vote for updating our software if we needed to. So you can put that on the agenda item there, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sure it'd be affordable.
At this right here, this council communication, we don't take any motion from it, it's just basically handed to us.
No action that needs to take place tonight.
Really, we'll have the meeting in here in a couple of weeks if we really can have a chance to read this and then come back with a thousand questions.
The, the public hearing, I believe, is the fifteenth. The public hearing? The adoption is the twentieth, I think the public hearing is the fifteenth, cause it's five days prior to action to adopt the budget.
June fifteenth?
Fifteenth, the public hearing.
I think that's what we've got proposed, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah. It's a Thursday. Special meeting.
Yeah, that's the meal of the mayor's conference. Yeah, Shay's nodding her head, there you go. That runs a kickball tournament, Shay? Okay. Okay. Alright, anybody have any other comments or anything? We'll move on to item four A. Discussion, consideration, possible action to authorize the city manager or his designate to sign the M O U with the Caddo Nation of Oklahoma.
I move to take action, possible action to authorize the city manager or his designate to sign the M O U with the Caddo Nation of Oklahoma.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's this all about?
It's probably the same as with the Chickasaws, isn't it, M O U?
Um, I don't know if it's a...
In the event of an emergency, they can provide us with their resources, and we could provide them with resources should they need help.
It's all part of the McGirt bossy.
Um, it's not part of that, it's just that we do one with the Chickasaw Nation, and this is the first time we've been presented one with the Caddo Nation. They're kinda developing their emergency management department.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Nelson?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Ashante Alexander?
Yes.
Roslin?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes, item five, motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
For adjourn, I'd like to call to order the Chickasha Municipal Authority. Any roll call, please?
Boyd?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Ian?
Here.
Hebbeth White?
Here.
Grayson?
Here.
Ashante Alexander?
Here.
Roslin?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Mosley?
Here.
Item two A, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve timeline changes for R F Qs for CMA twenty-three oh three Chickasha Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project.
Move to approve timeline changes for R F Qs for CMA twenty-three oh three Chickasha Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project.
Second.
This is the, the extension for more engineers partake in assessments.
Yeah, we, we learned after our rush to get this out the door that there were, there was at least one firm, there may have been more, that didn't get adequate notice of our request, as well as there's apparently a major conference of municipal engineers going on in Arkansas that took a lot of the principals out during that timeframe. So we asked for an extension of time for them to be able to respond more appropriately. That's all this is.
So this for the, the motion, a second, right? Discussion? Roll call?
Gien?
Yes.
Eberthwait?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Ashante Alexander?
Yes.
Roslin?
Yes.
Gertus?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Item 3, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.